I'll call this meeting to order. You ready? Okay, no, not you, it's the principal. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. May I have a motion to move it to executive session with the topics of collective negotiations with the Bronxville Administrators, Association of BTA Clerical Unit, Health Unit, excuse me, and the employment history of a particular individual's and potential litigation.
Second.
All in favor? Sound off. I don't get used very often, so. But thanks, everybody. At seven o'clock, we're going to go ahead and get started to keep us on time. So first of all, thank everybody that's here tonight and to those of you that are joining us online. Generally, I feel like it's just us and the administrators, so it's kind of nice to have some friendly faces in the audience. And I also want to thank our student rep. This is her second meeting with us, and she'll actually have a report later on. So our agenda tonight really focuses on two main topics. The first is the approval of the job specification for the district superintendent and then the proposed budget. So first and second of all, thank you guys for participating in the community outreach that we've done, your insights about the quality and the leadership characteristics of our next superintendent has very much molded what we're going to talk about tonight. As it relates to the budget, Dan wherever he is, here he is, is going to present the budget. Please know that this is our third meeting to talk about this. We started back in January in a budget workshop on a snowy, snowy Saturday morning, where we spent a couple hours really going into the details, including things like, we look at the demographics of our community and also things like the national birth rate, by the way, which is on tremendous decline. So the fact that we're seeing a decline in student enrollment is not actually very surprising. We also did class sizes because that's part of who we are as a community, is what the size of those classes. And we also, we actually did a really deep dive into special education, maybe deeper than Dan would have liked us to, but we did. And we also talked about the infrastructure needs of our building because we do have a large, fairly old building. And all of this has to be done with an eye on a tax cap. And so there's some serious constraints that we talked about. So we talked about it in January, we talked about it in February. Tonight, we will adopt the budget, which then allows us to move forward for a public hearing, I believe, in April, and then finally the vote.
Yeah, public hearing is May, early, first week in May.
First week of May.
Yeah.
And then the vote of the community. So, but before we go on any further, at our last meeting, we had a significant discussion about DEI, and I'd like to turn it to Roy, who's going to give us a quick update.
Yeah, so thank you, Arlene. Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming out to see all. As a result of the last board meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with several members of the community about issues related to DEI and some of the, the motion around the topic in general. And I thought we had a good meeting. And as a result of that, I'm looking forward to an advisory committee to, to work with myself and make recommendations. So the advisory committee will have 12 parents on it, three board members, two administrative reps, two teacher reps, potentially a student rep as well. And the goal is to really examine information because I think that that's the best source of what we can talk about is when everybody's sharing the right information and accurate information. So we'll look at things like state standards and critical, the frameworks, hopefully responsive frameworks, some of our curriculum guides, some book lists and things like that. Get really dive into it. I'm very hopeful that we can have positive and productive conversations around the topic and look at DEI through lens of what is best for the Bronxville community and what makes the most sense as it integrates into our school or doesn't integrate into our schools, whatever. And I'm hoping that as an advisory committee, we come up with a broad-based statement about that and list of recommendations for board consideration. So we have our first meeting on April 5th, and I'm looking forward to kind of step forward.
Great, thanks. On a celebratory side of the note, let's have a big shout out for the boys' varsity basketball.
Here, here.
Forty years.
Forty years. I just, and I also, I just was reflecting on it because I had several parents reach out to me who said some of the, the young men had attended community events and really had interacted with younger kids. And I just thought that was a great show of leadership under the Bronxville promise, that they were taking the time to really share their experiences, their joy, their celebration with those who were kind of in the pipeline, maybe even at the elementary school, but still in the pipeline to play basketball later on in their careers here. So I, a big shout out to Joe Haven and all the administrators for what they did and everybody that attended. Heard it was a great time. I also wanted to just mention, for those of you that maybe don't have children in high school, this is actually a very exciting time in the high school because the seniors hopefully have had their wonderful letters from their colleges. So they're in an exciting place as they think about their next season, or maybe they're dealing with a little bit of regret, but they're still excited and spend a lesson learned for them. It's the time of year where they're starting to look at AP, get those APs behind them and also just really looking at that next season of their lives. And so there's a lot of good buzz in the high school at this time of the year, and we do a lot to help them transition, to make that transition to college. For somebody who has two kids that have transitioned, that is a tough transition, at least it was with my family, and so are my children, and so I'm glad of all the work that the school does to cast them off. Just one piece of housekeeping, for those of you that are on YouTube, please submit your questions for the board section, for the comment section via the comment section box on YouTube. Please remember to include your name. We will not be addressing questions that come in anonymously. Also, the live chat has, is not available, so make sure you post your questions into that questions section. And so at this time, I'd like to welcome school leadership to our meeting. They are with us virtually for the presentation. You are not going to be able to see their faces because we had to make a trade-off between their faces and the slides. Oh, actually, well, but we're going to have to reduce them soon so you can actually see the slides. And so, but at the end, when we, the board had their discussion, we will bring them back in, the gallery pics. And so with that, I will turn it over to Susan.
Great. Thank you so much. Can you hear?
No, okay.
Me.
Perfect. And thank you, I'm here with my colleagues, Dr. Charles Fowler, Dr. Marty Brooks. And Connie, if you could go to the very first slide to start off, which is fine, but I wanted to say thank you, first of all, again, to Connie, Lauren, I'm going to pronounce your name, Lauren Vaztoz. I did that as well as I could, as well as to Brett Ashley for really putting together, along with Arlene's great help, all the community meetings. And a thank you to the entire school community for a really warm welcome. I do have to say, as a parent of two adult children now, I wanted to say to all the parents in the room that the highlight for us is always meeting with the students and your students, middle school and the high school students we met were fantastic and we should be very proud and were very helpful in helping in our work. My part of the presentation is going to talk about the information gathering that we did, where we had a variety of invitational virtual meetings, invitational in-person meetings. There was one general meeting that was open to the public, and then there was the online survey. All of this was handled by your team in Bronxville, sending this information to you. And then if we could move forward to the third slide, Connie. In total, we met with, in focus groups, with virtual and in-person, 202 people. And the purpose of our meeting with people virtually and in-person is to gather input from the community shaped around the two prompt questions that we use. And our job is simply to listen and to write down what we hear and then look for repeating themes that we hear from most groups and some groups. And we did that very successfully over two days just last week on March 14th and March 15th. And Connie, if we could just move to the next slide, just showing you a range of different people that were included, and it was a group of community members as well as parents, as well as students, faculty, teachers, administrators, village leaders, senior citizens, et cetera. And in total, as I mentioned, it was 202 people. We also had a survey that was available on a link on your website that went to the school leadership Survey Monkey site that 122 people participated in and also left comments. And this is just a breakdown to give you an idea of the number of people who responded based on resident with students, resident without students, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm pretty sure that you're going to make this PowerPoint available later this evening on your website. So folks who can't see this, you'll have a chance to look at that more deeply. This was very consistent with our experience in Bronxville when we were there, when we helped you with your past superintendent search. And then if we move on to the next slide, which is going to just be a snapshot from the survey, we're using past job specifications to really kind of get a sense of their relevance today versus what proved to be effective when we did the search for you six years ago. People just cited what they thought were very important of the seven then position specifications. And this is, again, just a quick snapshot of how it was very, how people responded to that, that prompt and clearly at the top, communicate effectively, creating a culture of trust, able to articulate a forward-thinking vision, relishes the challenge of leading, an experienced leader, an inspirational leader, and somebody knowledgeable about school finance. And then if you go to the next slide, Connie, please. There were, you know, from the focus groups, as I mentioned, there were 202 people. And again, using those two prompt questions that we had shared in our conversations with the focus groups. And Marty or Chuck, do you remember offhand exactly the language of those? I have them right here. From your perspective, what would attract a skilled and experienced administrator to be superintendent in the Bronxville School District? And what do you see as the major leadership challenges for the Bronxville School District over the next three to five years? We met with the various focus groups. We looked for repeating themes, but we never attribute what we learn to an individual or cohort. It goes into collective buckets. And really, our mission is to learn and gather the input from the community. And from that, we, we worked together over the weekend, our team of three, and we really created an appendix of this information. And there were certain themes that really rose to the top. They're here listed in alphabetical order, not in any list of priority. Commitment to student success, culture of excellence, district finances are solid, district known for its innovation and flexibility, energetic, talented parents and faculty excited to help, engaged in general PTA and student council. Next slide, please, Connie. And again, continuing, what would make somebody want to work in Bronxville? High achieving and dedicated faculty and staff, school is the crown jewel, small district and with a 1K-12 building, strong administrative team, and an unparalleled foundation. That's on the next slide, if you wanted to move that forward. Connie, please. And then what we learned from the groups that we met with in response to our question, what would be the leadership challenges in the next three to five years? Again, listed alphabetically, not in a particular order beyond that. Addressing social, emotional challenges post-pandemic, being an objective leader willing to listen to all voices, being visible and transparent, building trust while doing what is best for students, drawing lines when needed, providing consistent and clear communications. And then on to the next slide, please. I'm going to pass this over to my colleague, Marty. But just to set the stage for him, which I'm sure he's going to reinforce, we use these themes as the foundation for proposing draft specifications to the board, who in some form will adopt that and then that will become our recruitment tool. But I'll turn it over now to Marty.
Thanks. So to pick up where Susan left off, we basically combined three different sets of data. We took the information that we read online and combined that with what people were saying were still important to them from the specs that we used in 2017, and then combined that with what we heard people share with us in the focus groups. And three large newer sets of priorities came out. So the first is an experienced educational leader with a proven record of collaboration with staff and community who supports the principles embedded in the Bronxville promise and is committed to taking it to the next level. Next slide, please, Connie. A visionary, transparent, and honest leader who inspires academic excellence and innovation and promotes high expectations for student and staff success and well-being. Next slide. Thank you, Connie. An excellent and proactive communicator who welcomes using multiple platforms to listen, learn, and inform while keeping staff, parents, students, and community continuously engaged. A skilled and adaptive manager who responds effectively to challenging situations, understands school finance and taxation matters, and rallies and unites staff and community members around creative solutions. And lastly, a centered, objective thinker who has a record of building productive relationships and is excited to lead the Bronxville educational community into the next decade. So those are the specs that we're going to ask the board to consider tonight. And moving from there, with those specifications approved by the board, we then do the outreach to the educational community in the country through a variety of media that are available. The first is we recommend including an announcement of the vacancy with those specifications that are ultimately approved by the board listed right in the posting so that candidates immediately get a view of what it is that Bronxville is looking for in its next superintendent. Similarly, putting that same information on the website of the National Superintendent's Association, the American Association of School Administrators. And actually, in our work in that website, an email will go to virtually every current superintendent in the United States, again, describing Bronxville as a community and describing the kind of superintendent background and experience that the board is looking for. It will also be on the website of the New York State Council of School Superintendents. Those are the 714 roughly, school superintendents in New York State, on the website of the National Alliance of Black School Educators, on the website of ALAS, the Association of Latinas School Administrators. And then we send a recruitment letter or a description, again, of the specifications which the board has approved to a variety of people throughout the country, are at universities that prepare superintendents, associations of superintendents throughout the country, associations of school boards throughout the country. Again, intending to bring to as large an audience as possible, a description of Bronxville as a community and as a school, and a description of the qualities that this Board of Education is looking for in superintendent candidates. So once the board has approved the specifications, then those steps will be taken to get that information out locally and nationally. And that concludes our overall presentation.
Thank you, Chuck.
We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chuck. I'm sorry, I wish I had a slide that had all five on it. I apologize. That's an oversight now that we think about it. But if I could sum it up, it's an experienced educator, academic excellence, communicator, centered, objective thinker, and then one basically to keep the finances and the taxes in order. So that's kind of how I, how I think about it. So with that, open it up to the board for questions, comments. Go ahead.
I'd be kind of interested to hear, you know, relative to other searches you are or have been involved in recently, what would you say would set our criteria apart from other searches? Is this something that most districts are looking for? Is there anything in here that's unique to Bronxville?
Some aspects of it are, are similar in theme. In almost every superintendent's search that we're doing and others are doing, the issue of communication and engagement of the school community is an important aspect of superintendent's work everywhere. But the very first of the criteria related to the Bronxville promise is obviously unique to the contents of, of that promise. And I think there's probably a great deal more emphasis in what we heard from people in the Bronxville community about academic excellence and the importance of solid academic background for students as they prepare for life after high school. Marty or Susan?
Just in comparison to the past position specification, the emphasis there had actually been more on somebody who is experienced and could handle a bond offering and a capital renovation plan. That was the timing of where your school district was at that time. That's shifted now, so that didn't really rise to the top of what we heard in terms of what Chuck just articulated. And I do want to reinforce what he said about the Bronxville promise because that was a theme that came through many of our, a lot of our conversations with community members. And it is, just does distinguish Bronxville from other public school districts that we're familiar with.
And I think one other point is the importance of somebody who can really listen. People talk to us about how different people have different views of what Bronxville's next level of work might be, and the importance of somebody who can listen carefully to all of that and craft that into a consensus.
And the last spec, I think it was the last, we carefully chose the language of a centered and objective thinker. And communications, as Chuck referenced, is a common thread in any organization nowadays and humility as well. But we heard the necessary component of somebody who really enjoys that element, doesn't just do it as a task, but it's something that he or she welcomes and likes to listen and learn and like to continuously engage people and can use a topic as a, as a learning opportunity to extend communications with the community from an outreach standpoint.
Thank you. Others? Jack?
Yeah, you mentioned two things that I want to come back to. One is taking it to the next level, and the other is excellence. All highly competitive districts throw those words around. Did you get any sense of what people were expecting three years down the road? What would tell community members that we have somebody who values excellence the same way that they're looking for now? And when they take it to another level, will it be the next level that people want? Do you have any sense of what that next level looks like that people want?
It's a complex question.
I'm glad to see you answering it, Marty.
Good luck.
We nominated Marty to handle that. Any comment from Jack? He does.
I think that almost everybody we met with has tremendous pride in the Bronxville School. They see it as a unique place in so many ways. Three schools under one roof, the level of accomplishment that the kids have achieved over time. You know, I could go on and on. And I think people are hoping that the system is committed to maintaining the work that has brought all of that in place while trying to figure out, in terms of creativity, innovation, critical thought, what is really next? What, where would this system go? And what are the views of the staff? What does the, what do the parents think? And how can you blend all of that together into a vision that would help move the place from where it is now, which is a great place, to an even better one?
Well, reinforcing the singularity of Bronxville because, again, the Bronxville promise distinguishes Bronxville from other school districts we're familiar with. Jack, are you going to apply for the job?
I'm enjoying being retired.
Others?
I think, I think two concrete examples that I heard relatively defining the next level. A feeling to look at the Bronxville promise and, and perhaps in particular, look at issues of self-development and should they be added in or in another way emphasized? Some parents asked about that. Others talked about the challenge in today's world of college admissions, a great deal of pride in what's currently happening and what the record in Bronxville has been, but a desire to be sure that Bronxville keeps up with the changing world of college admissions as the next few years unfold. And Jack, I would, I would add one more point. We heard a fair amount about concern about the impact that the pandemic has had on kids and staff as well, but on, on kids. And people feeling that's a tale yet to be told and how the district responds to that, monitors that, responds to that over time is seen as a key piece.
Right. And also, committed to the next level, student focused, but also staff and faculty focused as well.
Did technology come up in that conversation, Roy? I would expect pandemic, but I wondered about technology. As in using technology to teach our children, not necessarily learning technical skills? Just curious.
Yeah, I heard some of that from parents with whom I met. The basic idea was that out of the unfortunate circumstances of the pandemic, there were some technological approaches that were, in fact, to the advantage of students and, and teachers and the desire to capitalize on those while not continuing to utilize technological processes that were no longer appropriate given the in-person schooling that was available. One common theme we heard, I think, relative to tech- One common theme we heard, I think, relative to technology and to the pandemic, was a great deal of pride in how much Bronxville was able to accomplish compared to other districts in restoring in-person learning as quickly as was done in your community.
Tremendous amount of pride. And the students were proud, or are proud of their schools. And that's why we tucked in the language of an adaptive manager to Chuck's point and to what you're suggesting, Arlene, is that what were the positive learnings from the pandemic that could still be incorporated to help continue reinforcing as another way of learning and social development for kids? The kids were particularly proud, I thought, and I'm sure Marty, you felt the same when you met with, you had high school students, I had middle school students. We had good numbers who joined, I think 16 and 17. It was a terrific turnout. They were eager to share points of view and what they see as the future, and how proud they are of the school district, and how the school district lets kids figure out their own areas of interest and explore them. And there was real unanimity about that. And they were all very respectful to each other, which, again, I think is a good reflection for us to use when we reach out to talented people to see if we can start a conversation with them about the Bronxville opportunity.
Let me just add a quick thought about that. The high school students with whom I met talked about the increased voice and choice they had during the pandemic, and their hope that now that they're back in school, they'll continue to have more voice and choice than perhaps they've had in the past. This is a trend that's occurring across the U.S. Kids spent a lot of time having discretion over how they conducted themselves while at home. And now they're back in school, and the amount of discretion that they're able to employ has diminished a little bit. And students are trying to find a comfortable place. And I think that's going to be a challenge, not just in Bronxville, but really every place.
Tom, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we use the word excellent. I mean, I don't think anybody advertised for a superintendent who sucks. If they'd be asking me, and I'm not interested, I'm just trying to get off this board. So when we're talking about the people to whom you will, as, you know, we're not the educational professionals and we need your help. And that's, you know, that's why we partnered with you as we did when we had the search that yielded Dr. Montesano. Bronxville is unique, certainly in my estimation. It's from start with the building, to the community. The Bronxville Promise is significant in the reflection of the community in my estimation. The staff, we have good labor relations, I think. And, you know, our response to COVID was, to my knowledge, better than anyone I'm aware of. I mean, we've been in business since just after Labor Day of 2020. To what extent are the talented people that you intend to reach out for, out to on our behalf, to what extent do they perceive, if at all, Bronxville as being unique or appealing to talented people or being an opportunity that they might be interested in?
This question came up a lot during the meetings that we had. People asked us, so how well-regarded is Bronxville? How well-known are we? Do you think that people working elsewhere who are happy and well-liked where they currently are would be interested in making a change to come here? And our answer is Bronxville is very well-known, incredibly highly regarded, and I think likely to draw a very strong field of candidates. There are a handful of school districts in every geographic area that are known to be the kind of districts that superintendents would like to work in. Bronxville is one of those.
Just kind of follow up on that point. You know, when I read the characteristics, to me, they seem very general. And you can kind of pick any Westchester school district and almost kind of plug it into here, other than the promise. How do you get to this point that Tom was talking about, the specifics of Bronxville? Does there, obviously, you have characteristics. What else goes out with this kind of package? Or if I'm interested in this position, would I pull up that would give me more specifics to Bronxville? Just trying to understand that piece of it. Because somebody, you know, obviously, and probably the three or four states right around here, I don't know, but the suburb I'm thinking of, the Chicago, north of the city, which has some very similar, I think, characteristics of Westchester, but they may know nothing about Bronxville, but it might be a good fit. This, to me, just says, huh, you know, why would I pursue this?
It's generally the case that people who read this will contact one of the three of us to find more out. And of course, it's in the, it's through our talks with them that we're able to add color to the words. But we wrote the five specs with specific words that speak to people who are interested in doing the kind of work that we feel people told us Bronxville needs to have done in the coming years. So what we're going to seek to do when we begin our recruiting, which is tomorrow, and we start running our ads, is to reach out to folks whose both background and experience match the kinds of words that are written in these five specs. They are broad, but the words within each one are pretty specific. And everyone is in there to communicate a specific message to people who are contemplating applying. And as I think we shared with the Board at an earlier date, we don't reach, our goal is not to screen only people who apply. Our goal is to recruit actively. And what we do is we reach out to people currently aren't, perhaps not contemplating making a change, and talking to them about why Bronxville might be a good match for them.
Yeah, and just to expand on or reinforce what Marty said is, I appreciate, Michael, your observation about these five specifications, but they're unique to what we learned the two days in evening we were working in the district, as well as the online survey. And each specification we do for any of our clients is unique to that client. And they're not, they may be thematically interchangeable, but the actual language or the words, as Marty referenced, are very specific based on what we learned and heard from the community we met with when we were in Bronxville. And again, our recruiting methods are multifold. There are advertisements, they're both virtual, postings on the professional websites. And there's the 1,800 curated list that Chuck referenced. And then there's the direct outreach that we have. As Marty said, our work begins when you approve the specifications, which then allows us to use that as the tool by which we try to find the candidates who best match your specifications. And then we'll start reaching out to people, as well as reaching out to people we don't know but may work in a district that's similar to Bronxville and have characteristics, and see if we can engender a conversation that might be worthwhile. And as Chuck and Marty well know, Dr. Montesano is going to be important, because superintendents know each other. So they're going to know, boy, and they'll pick up the phone or shoot him an email, or know he's happy, and that's a positive reflection. And we hope, boy, we hope. And, no, but also, you, as the Board, are important in this process. Because, trust me, talented superintendents or aspiring superintendents, they're going to check board members out in the community as much as they're going to look at the position specification itself. They're going to review video of meetings. They're going to see what effectiveness you have as a governance team. These are all important factors for consideration. So that's part of our toolbox as well, that you have a history of a solid governance, board governance team, and good governance in your central office with the Board as well. That's another attribute, not built in here, but it's fundamental to how do we try to recruit people.
And if I could mention, there are demographic elements of Bronxville that were hand-in-hand with the high goals that are included in the specifications. A school district K-12 within one building with 1,500 to 1,600 students. That brings alive much of what's spoken about in terms of the personalization of education and the superintendent's ability to work with classroom teachers and work in the building with students and drop in in classrooms. That is very attractive, because it is so rare. There's been much discussion also about the role of the foundation in Bronxville, and having that available in addition to the benefits of a reasonable tax base. And how that can make these specifications really become a reality rather than platitudes about things that would be desired but are so difficult to come by in schools that have a different demography in terms of size and relative support.
But, you know, Chuck, to that point, it will also serve to be a deterrent to superintendents or aspiring superintendents who don't want to work in a K-12 building, where they can't sit in their ivory tower and be separate from the students and the faculty. So that's an important selling, or another part of our toolbox, is you need somebody who will thrive on being in the same building where every day you're going to be interacting with kindergartners up to seniors, as well as the faculty and staff. That's not normative in a lot of school districts.
Mickey, did you have a question?
I do. So first of all, I think a couple of things can't go unsaid, one of which is we've got some really big shoes to fill. And I think, I think that makes it, you know, even that much difficult to come up with a set of criteria that we're looking for. Number two, I was very encouraged by the number of people that participated in the sessions that you put together, the respondents to the online survey. It was, it was a level of engagement that I didn't expect. And so I was very encouraged by that. Okay, so now those two comments aside, as I think about it, we're living in, we're living in changing times. And in changing times, I think one of the most important things is communication and visibility around the things that are happening inside the school. And the question I have is, we have these five criteria, which I think are really good for the most part. I wonder if there's, if there was thought put into the ordering of those criteria and all that, and I'll say why. And the reason I ask that question is because, as I think about it, one of the most important things after experience should be a leader who's ready to manage through those changing times by providing visibility frequently through communications in many different channels. And I sense, based on many of the discussions I've had with members of our community, that that is something that is of utmost import to our community.
So Mickey, I think the question is, how did you put them in order?
Yeah.
What was your rationale of the order?
Yeah, and let's, and let's talk about whether or not we should be, we should be perhaps amplifying one or two of these that we think are critically important, given, given the changing times that we're, that we're embarking on at the moment.
The order in which they appear will be completely your call. We put them in this order because this reflects the feedback that we got. People were talking to us about experience, supporting the educational program, moving it ahead, the importance of having a visionary, transparent leader who, who really could maintain and promote the excellence of the program there. So we put the first two together, because we thought they went together. Communication was a key piece, and that's why that appeared third. But again, if you think, as a Board, that this needs to appear in a different order, that's, that's fine.
I think one of the reasons why Bronxville Promise is in the first is we want the person to immediately, upon reading that, go to the Bronxville Promise, because it broadly describes, in a way you can't get into a small ad in a journal, it describes Bronxville and its aspirations. So we thought it would be good to put that out in front of the candidate first so that they took that step to look at what Bronxville stands for.
I think too, I mean, again, I agree with Marty and Chuck, of course, and it's your decision for how you want to order it. I think a smart person is going to read all five and not stop at one. And somebody once said, if you're reading a contract, you always want to skip the beginning, the end, and go to the middle of the contract, because that's where the important stuff is. But the point is, is that the type of person that we hope to identify who best matches your specifications is going to read all five, regardless of the order. It's going to be important.
Yeah, we should talk about it. I have a, I have a view and around how much visibility, transparency, and frequent communication matters, given what have, you know, what we've gone through in the last couple of years as a, as a country, not just Bronxville, and what we expect to have to go through over the next several years. So something to think about, guys, and I may send you some comments afterwards.
Okay, thank you, Mickey. Anybody else? Tom?
Yeah, we've touched upon community. And, you know, I can see where potential candidates would be, would be maybe wary of a small town where the people are highly engaged in the school, as they are in Bronxville, given its integral involvement in the, in the community itself. Of course, we haven't had, you know, YouTube moments at our Board meetings. This one's not over yet, so there's the potential, I guess. But our community of highly engaged, highly bright people of varying opinions on things, is that a, is that something that is an attraction for a high-quality candidate? Does it put off, does it just put off the people who want to sit in an ivory tower, like Jack did? But what, you know, it's important, it's very important for, like Dr. Montesano's done a wonderful job of engaging the community and managing the community. And it's a, you know, it's not an easy community. Bronxville's, you know, a challenge, I think, in my experience. How do you, how do you sell the Bronxville community, active, engaged, and very bright that it is? How do you, how does that play towards the high-quality candidates, if you can answer that?
I'll throw a couple of things out. I believe that high-quality engagement is very attractive to creative and able leaders. Demagoguery is not attractive to able and creative leaders. And I think the reputation that Bronxville has is for that in-depth engagement of parents, of students, of members of the community. I mean, in speaking with people on your village board who are so enthusiastic about the importance of this school to the community as a whole, and their desire to become engaged with the new superintendent when he or she is appointed. I think that is very attractive and makes the district very attractive to high-quality candidates. But simply having lots of people stand up and shout and yell at school board meetings without that active engagement, which unfortunately is taking place in a number of communities today as a result of our current political climate, that, that becomes far less attractive. But Bronxville, because of your history and what's been happening in Bronxville, has an ability to attract- an ability to attract people who sincerely want that constructive and creative kind of engagement.
So Chuck, what's our biggest challenge?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Chuck, what is our biggest challenge?
I, I think probably the, the biggest challenge is finding the right leader who may be in a place, as Marty mentioned earlier, who is not thinking about making a change at this moment, but really speaks to, in his or her working history, the specifications that are in front of you and convincing them that now may be a good time to, to look at this opportunity. It may be a, a once in a decade opportunity in terms of, of a position being available such as Bronxville offers. So it's really bringing the opportunity to the attention of a field of very capable instructional leaders who are out there because it's, it's a challenging time in terms of people making changes in their work, particularly in this immediate post pandemic period.
Yeah, people are going to look for a state, if they're going to make a change, they're going to want to be assured that where they're moving to, there's a history of stability and commitment to public education and engaged parent base and foundation. You mentioned too, I forget which board member, that, you know, following in a successful superintendent's footsteps can be tough too. Somebody has to be assured that the board is going to be receptive to a new person and want to ensure that that person is successful as well because he or she will not be Dr. Montesano.
I also think there's another challenge. Some communities have been broken by dissent within about the direction that they think the educational program needs to move in. And Bronxville is not there. But I think a big challenge is making sure Bronxville doesn't get there. And whomever you hire to replace Roy is going to be confronted with people who have different views of what the next three to five years should be like. And again, trying to find common ground and reaching consensus in a way that does not cause the community to split, I think is going to be a significant challenge.
That's a good point.
Well said. Okay, any other, any other questions from the board? If not, Mickey, I feel like there's an open item on the order.
There is.
And so would you like us to go ahead and take the motion subject to revisiting the order?
Yeah.
There's not much time because we're printing.
I understand.
Tomorrow, so tell me, give me some.
Yeah, if I could just jump in here, my understanding is we're hoping to get an advertisement in two issues of Education Week, which is the preeminent journal for educators. In order to capture two, we would have to get the copy to the ad person, is it tonight, Chuck?
Tonight or first thing tomorrow morning?
First thing tomorrow morning, meaning we need to get it in his hands by, you know, 7:30, 8:00 in the morning. Because we don't want to lose the opportunity to capture those two issues.
I want to move number three up to two. I also want to augment number three a bit because I, I have a strong view around visibility and transparency that I think the community is looking for, frankly. So if I sent some proposed language in the next hour or two, would that, would that be sufficient?
We need to do it in a couple of meetings, I'm afraid.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we could, yeah, that's.
I agree with moving three to two.
Yes, fine, two is fine.
Okay, then let's add, then keep talking, give me two minutes guys.
How about an excellent proactive communicator who appreciates the value, right?
Okay.
Of using multiple platforms, or you can add whatever, whatever descriptor with value.
Right.
The high value, whatever of, of using, stressing the value of using multiple platforms to listen, learn and inform. I think, I think that stressing it and moving it up, that might, might accomplish what you're looking for.
I think it does. And if we can add the word, keep, keep, keep working in the air, Tom. If we can add the word.
I'm not getting paid for this.
We can add the word frequently in there somewhere, right? That, that kind of establishes a tenor of communication.
I think proactive, Mickey, kind of covers frequency. Proactive and ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
Which, which, I mean, we've agreed that you want to move slide number, number three to number two, correct?
I did, yeah.
Correct.
In terms of the order.
All right, Tom's got it.
Tom's, you gotta have a lawyer with you, it's always good.
That's right.
That's not funny.
And, and which of the five are you hoping to?
You've got a couple of moments.
Susan, can you hold on please? So we're, we're moving three to two.
We're moving three to two. And then the now, and the now two will read, "An excellent and proactive communicator who values the frequent engagement and use of multiple platforms to listen, learn and inform while keeping staff and parents and students and community continuously engaged."
All right, let's read that.
Perfect.
Did, did, Marty, did you get all of that?
I think I have, I think I actually have.
Okay. We want to make sure we get the language correct. And, and, go ahead Chuck.
An excellent and proactive communicator who values the.
Frequent.
Frequent.
Frequent engagement.
And use.
And use of multiple platforms to listen, learn and inform while keeping staff, parents, students and community.
Engaged.
Continuously engaged.
Is that working?
It works well. And guys, look, I don't, I don't intend to spend time working through specific words and nitpicking, but the point's important here.
I think so too, Mickey.
Words matter.
I think everybody agrees.
This is, this is about communication, it's about transparency and it's about visibility. And I actually believe that many of the discussions I've had are all coming back to that one, one point. And I think we should, we should, we should play that up.
You were not discussing, Mickey, you're absolutely right. I thunderously agree.
Okay.
Okay, good luck. Do we have a thunderous motion then to approve?
I believe.
Mike, where Mike's?
All right, so we're saying, we're saying that we're moving three to two.
Yes.
And, and, and excellent and proactive communicator who values.
The frequent.
The frequent engagement and use. And use of multiple platforms.
Yeah, so if I could ask, Susan, if you could, if you could send me a text with that rewrite, I will make sure we get it to Connie and make sure that it's in alignment with what we're talking about.
All right, Marty and Chuck and I will get that to you.
Perfect, I'll be standing by. And so I have a motion on the table.
Oh, you want us to do it now?
Susan, I've been, I have a motion on the table and a second, all in favor. Aye, if I may, listeners? No. Motion carries, thank you ever so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, School Leadership. We're working with you.
Well done, School Leadership.
Three months, six days.
Okay, we'll see you in a month.
All right, we're going to, I'm going to get this to you soon.
Okay, guys, I'll be waiting for it.
Chuck and Marty?
Okay, can we, Connie, can you drop the three again so they can continue on and we can continue on? Gently, sure, gently drop. To our next, very exciting topic, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 16 meeting and the special meeting on the 28th.
So moved.
Second, Jen, thank you in favor, aye.
Is that Jen as the second?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I usually forget that, for those of you in the audience, I historically forget to approve them. Budget, stand, take it away.
I'll let Connie catch up.
Sorry.
Just take a deep breath. Almost there, great. We think we've settled on an appropriate budget for next year. The process began in October with our current year rolling figures and is culminating with the budget adoption hopefully tonight and a referendum in May. The work we have left is reviewing where we left off at the last board meeting. The changes have been made since then and where we are now is the board will hopefully consider adopting the budget. So next slide, Connie, please. One more, hit it one more time and one more time. Couple more times.
And historically, you have to build into the slides too.
We left the February meeting with the proposed 22, 23 budget under the cap at $51,47,724. After further analysis by the finance committee over the last few weeks, changes to that figure included a reduction in one budget line for tax surcharge expense of $125,000, which was recommended by the finance committee, and also an increase of $95,138, which represents an additional third grade section for next year, that moving the current second grade from five sections to six next year, which is recommended by the superintendent. So that gets us to a proposed budget of $51,017,862, a tax levy increase of 2.15%, which is about $50,000 under our calculated projected cap of 2.26%. Next slide. And this just gives you a graphic representation of where that falls within, say, the last decade or so. It's right, right in the sweet spot of where we've been, especially on the expenditure side, coping with a few revenue items, which brings the tax levy a little over 2%, but still within, well under our calculated cap. Next slide, please, Connie. This is a pie chart that shows the Blue Pac-Man, which really demonstrates that we're a personnel-driven organization. All the shaded blue areas include, include personnel, salary and benefits, the direct personnel costs. So 75% of what we do is, is direct human interaction. Outside of that, you know, we, there's contractual codes, probably the next biggest one, and then debt service. You take those out of there, you know, that, that alone gets us to over 90% of our budget. Next slide, please, Connie. So in calculating our levy next year, we are appropriating $500,000 from our projected fund balance to offset that levy, which is consistent where we've been over the last number of years. We were a little higher last year, so we're reducing that figure. And we, we do bring in revenue split fairly evenly between state aid and other sources of almost $5 million to help offset what we need to raise via the taxpayers of Bronxville. And again, we are under the cap by about $50,000. What does that say for our tax rate? Right now, the preliminary assessment roll, which is, it's going to be updated in a few weeks, is at $3,229,149,596. That's actually an increase of about 3.3% over prior years. Now, since that, that assessment roll is up higher than the levy, it actually leads to a reduction in the tax rate of about 1.12%. So last year, it was about 14.1, let's see. I think it was about 14.2 roughly.
Yes, 14.2.
Yeah, exactly. So now we're down to about 14.1. If you take that to just a simple math, home assessed $2 million in the current year paying $28,529, that, if the assessment stays the same, that's, that same property would pay $28,210 in school taxes. And this is just a graphic or a table representation of where that fits in compared to prior years. It's right in line with the historical range since full value assessment over a decade ago, between the low of 13.3 and a high of 14.3. So you, basically a typical home in Bronxville will pay about 1.4% of its assessed value in property taxes. And that's where we are. So we've had, we have a resolution to adopt.
Mike, any comments from the finance committee?
Yeah, listen, nobody likes to pay taxes and, you know, and, and especially in Bronxville because they're high. But I think the last couple of years have been a little bit tough trying to figure out the budget, the increases with the pandemic, what we're spending cost on. So I think this is a, a pretty good outcome for a tough historic look back for two years to see where we've been. And I think, you know, hopefully next year, we're going to get back to having some comparisons and we can look at and see what some of the increases are, maybe we can save, save some dollars. But like Dan has said, 70, 75% of our budget's pretty much fixed day one because it's, once you have a teacher's contract and you know what the state gives us for the pension contribution, that's 75% of our budget. So we're really working with about a third, you know, 25, 30% of our budget that we do try to save as much as we can from the taxpayer. And I think, you know, with a couple of changes made, I think it's a fair budget.
I'm also looking at a time where inflation's going crazy on us too. Under 25%. Any comments and questions from the board members?
Just, just noting that we have discussed this. This is the first time we're bringing this up and it's not really.
We have had weekend sessions.
Yeah, I was going to say, we get extra credit for Saturday mornings.
Really, really fun.
Okay, with that, it's a roll call vote.
It is a requirement for roll call.
It is a requirement for roll call. I will go alphabetically by last name.
We need a motion and a session.
That would be helpful. Thank you, Connie. We all have a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Jack Earwood.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Special thanks to Dan and all of his team who have done the human work to get us to where we are.
Thank you, Dan.
Finally.
Finally.
We've only made it to number five, man.
I've been waiting for seven.
I know you have, but you were second, so this is tough on you.
Thank you, hi everybody. Thank you very much. Before I give my update, my report, I'm going to pass the baton over to Isabella Benner, our student rep, to go first, to provide your student report.
Hi, yeah, I'm Isabella, just here to give a brief report on what's been going on over the past four months from the student end. A very significant thing was the mask mandate being lifted. Generally, it's had a very, very positive response from kids. Obviously, that's met some rule changes for contact tracing quarantine and, I mean, I just think we're going to have to be constantly adjusting to everything that's going on around us for quite a while. But generally, a very positive response. I can say personally that just being able to see my teachers and my peers' faces makes interactions feel so much more normal. Not that we haven't gotten used to wearing masks all the time, but I think it was a big relief for a lot of people. We just came out of a very successful winter season. We had our boys' basketball team go farther than the program's ever gone, I think, and our track team sent several realites to the Nationals this year. And the rules changing kind of aligned with the end of the championship season, which is kind of nice because we've got a lot of student support and we opened up a student section for basketball games, which was very popular and a great segue to, like you said, a more spirited springtime. a more spirited springtime. Entering the spring, we have a lot of exciting things coming up. We have World Language Week this week, which we have foreign language clubs and classes to celebrate in culture and language throughout the week. And something that's been in the works for quite a while now is Service Week, which is taking place next week. And a ton of different clubs are participating by through either an act of service or just an activity related to or spreading awareness about what they do in their club. So, I know a lot of, like, clothing drives, charities, things of that sort are going on next week, so that should be pretty exciting. We're entering our spring season now, which we're also very optimistic about. Something's going on with arts. We have this whole spring musical this year, musical with wands, which, right? I know pretty well, too, and I know Frisbee will be very fun to watch. So, that's something to look out for in June. And we also, Art Design Association is opening my night tonight, so I think it's their third year doing that. So, it's nice to see students getting involved and stuff. And kind of changing gears to something very important, but very current right now, too, is a lot of student-led initiatives in effort to support Ukraine. We had a couple of seniors come up to the SFL earlier on to propose a bake sale, which all the proceeds went directly to the U.K., and it was very successful. I think the first day they were selling, they raised like over $300. We have a supply drive coming up for refugees in the next coming weeks. We also have the Model United Club bringing in a speaker for Service Week next week, who is a Ukrainian refugee living in Yonkers now after the country. So, it's very nice to see, like, global awareness and student engagement going on. So, yeah, that was an important point. And from a quality of life standpoint, something that's been pretty enduring throughout the year, as you also mentioned, was the use of technology for communication between students and teachers, especially relevant now. We had our Quality of Life Committee present to faculty about how to improve Google Classroom use to make it most efficient and to its fullest extent. It's very important to students, kind of as a way to lower their stress, too, to know what's going on from an online standpoint and just using technology the best way possible. And also, since we had our mask mandate lifted, we have more positive cases and more students having to go on Zoom. And that's always tough already with training online, but making sure to post notes for students who aren't on Zoom, keeping them as engaged and participated as possible. Yeah. And looking ahead into the spring, like I said, we have a lot of exciting things coming up, a junior/tenure prom in May, but that's also not to say that this is a very stressful time for a lot of kids. AP exams are coming up a little sooner than I would like. But, and we're also nearing the end of the quarter, which is typically picks up a lot academically and can be very, very stressful. But I think it's been just an entire new year of managing and adjusting, and I'm sure that that's not going to be any different, so.
Thank you, Isabella.
Thank you.
So, I'm just going to pick up a little bit on some of the mentions Isabella said about the COVID stuff. So, we continue to test every week, so if people still want to get tested, please, if you haven't provided consent, you can still do that. We're still testing roughly 300 or so each week. Our infection rate's about 1% or slightly below 1%, so we're still doing pretty well, even though there's been some slight uptick on the number of positive cases, I would say, since the masks have been made optional. But due to the new quarantine rules, et cetera, it doesn't have as much of a major impact on kids missing school because they can come back with masks on, et cetera, after day five. The other thing I wanted to mention is that similar to the February break, prior to the April break, we're going to distribute the take-home rapid test kits again and ask that all staff and students take time to do the rapid test before they come back to school, just so we can make sure when you come back, everybody is as healthy as we can possibly make them. And the other thing I want to do is just commend the student body for not only, you know, getting through this with us, but since the masks have been optional, we still have some students who choose to wear masks, some teachers who choose to wear a mask. Those concerned that there would be some peer pressure involved in that, but I have to tell you, we really haven't seen that, and our kids have really risen to the occasion, so hats off to the student body. I'd like to go into some happy things, the student achievement, district achievement type things tonight, and share some of the good work that has been going on in the school. And the first thing is that I want to mention that the Bronxville Elementary School has been notified by the New York State Ed Department that it's been nominated for United States Department of Blue Ribbon Award based on its overall academic performance. So, Mr. McCour is currently working on completing the application for that process. We're sending it out to the US DOE in April, and we're hopeful and confident that the application will be approved and received and will get notified that the school will be a Blue Ribbon School, which is quite a nice phenomenon. I always get concerned about saying before it happens, but we're going to start paying us gross on that one. But it's nice to be nominated nonetheless. On the high school side, just so you know, this year, we've had four national merit finalists. Last year, we also had four, Al Sfranca, Isaiah Weir, Andrew Zankin, Patrick Wu. We've had 12 national merit-commended students as well this year. Our senior class, we have 30 AP scholars. And what that means is that students have scored three or higher on at least three AP exams, 22 students with honors, meaning they scored at least a 3.25 on all of their exams. And we also have 18 students with distinction, meaning they scored an average of 3.5 on all the exams they've taken, AP exams they've taken. This year, we do have 324 students enrolled in at least one AP course with a planned 813 exams to be administered in May. So, when Isabella talks about that stress level, 813 times over, it will happen. Some other highlights that I'd like to just mention, we had our first student-run theater production this year. I know we've mentioned it in the past, but it's worth mentioning again, it was really terrific. We've had several students, a few students receive some Scholastic Art and Writing Award competitions. So, freshman Leah Lacy won for her competition in creative writing. We had a junior, Andrew Doyle, won a Silver Keyed Honorable Mention in Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for his artwork. A senior, one of our seniors, Aaron Foley, is working with NASA's Climate Change Research Initiative after her summer internship and is in the process of getting a paper published in a professional journal regarding her work.
I want to know what Tom had done by the time. I don't think...
That's amazing.
Yeah, I'm not done yet. Keep going, hold on. We have another senior, Grace Grammons, is one of 60 nominees across the United States for the 2022 U.S. Presidential Scholar in the Arts. She's also a 2022 Young Arts finalist in the category of Voice Singer/Somewriter. Another senior, Olivia Servasco, who received an Honorable Mention award in writing for her screenplay, First Lady Astronauts, in the 2022 Young Arts Competition. And finally, we did compete in the Regional National History Day Competition, and so excited that we have 28 of our students, freshmen, sophores, who did well and will be moving on to the state competition moving forward, so. That's it.
Yeah, a compensation day you want to talk about.
Oh, a compensation day, sure. Next thing on my agenda is also exciting. So, as you may know, or may not know, we built in four emergency closing days into our school calendar, and as part of the BTA Future Association Contract, if we do not use all the emergency closing days, we have to give back one of the days as a comp day. We only used three this year. I was close, I only used three. So, there's a resolution for the board's consideration to approve April 18th, which is the Monday after Easter as the comp day to have school closing. So, that's the resolution for...
And the community said, yes. Okay, so may I have a resolution to...
Move.
Move. Thank you, appreciate it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No need to repeat what's already here. Dr. Kelly, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I have a quick agenda before you this evening to consider. I just want to echo Isabella, first of all, thank you. Your reports are always really informative, and it's so important that we hear the student voice at the board level, so thank you. And I love that you mentioned the difference it has made with the mask mandate being lifted because the adults in the building feel the same way. To be able to see our students in the hallways and their classrooms, and I just think it's really improved the overall level of engagement, so thank you for noting that as well. So, in terms of the resolutions, we've had an opportunity to speak about some of the personnel issues in executive session. We have before you some overages tied to IEP as well as minor revisions to both middle school advisors and teacher mentors due to a new leave replacement that we wanted to make sure was properly mentored. In addition, we have a teacher rated resignation as well as a new teacher rated hire, as well as a new substitute teacher on tonight's agenda. Also, this is typically the agenda where we ask you to appoint the election personnel for the annual school budget vote and board election, which will be on May 17th this year, as well as the compensation rates. And then, again, there were a few adjustments to our special other stipend list. We are looking to offer the Williamsburg trip this year, but for eighth graders, because they were not able to take that last year, so we need to pay a faculty member to help coordinate that, as well as a few revisions to the spring coaches roster. So, I ask you to consider items A through N.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Move.
May I have a motion to approve items A through N?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
I'll start with the updated risk assessment and recommended audit plan. The Audit Committee met with the team from Acume Partners to review the updated risk assessment as required by the New York State Controller Regulation. Acume Partners interviews our staff, administrators, and select board members in updating their risk assessment. All rating categories were consistent with prior years, with four categories improving slightly, while the government aid and grants increased slightly as we are seeing more federal aid in the current year with COVID aid, et cetera. And the recommended focus area for internal audit is purchasing and accounts payable this year, and the audit will commence immediately.
Do you want to mention the cyber?
Yes, we also discussed at the Audit Committee meeting the possibility of having another cyber audit. I think, you know, we last did a technology audit a couple of years ago, but, I mean, that's like, that's light years in the way things are moving now, literally. So, we're looking into commissioning an audit, really any vulnerability or penetration that we might be vulnerable to.
Yeah, you're going for an RFP, is that correct?
Yep. And we're also doing RFPs for both an internal auditor and an independent auditor, as required every five years. So, a lot of auditing activity coming up.
So, may I have a motion to approve the risk assessment? Is it included in your agenda?
Simple.
Jack?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dan, anything else on your side?
Well, February results are in. The projection for the current year is still calculating a little over 500,000 in surplus, which is about 1%. In general, expenditures should be more accurately projectable in the next report as the settlement with BTA teacher's contract is be executed and implemented by the end of this month. I want to really, really thank Tony Hernandez, our payroll clerk, and Barbara Vitaleano, our personnel assistant, because a middle-of-the-year settlement is very complicated, and these are the two who are really implementing this change in the middle of the year at the ground level.
Send them our thanks.
Will do. And this settlement is around the range initially anticipated, so I don't see a significant additional surplus arising from any changes of this settlement. And let's see, and the surplus this year is really driven by revenues more than expenditure savings. So, we'll get the half a million to offset the tax levy for next year.
No concerns?
Yeah, no concerns. No financial action items. Moving on to facilities, I also want to reiterate that it's great to see faces again, but staff and students preferring or required to wear masks are more than welcome to do so. We are ready for spring activities. I just saw the first half of a lacrosse game out there. The new mats are out by the track. We are, however, getting a little squeezed on baseball field availability. We use scout field, and the county is also offering scout field to a Yonkers school this year that's in the mix. You know, when the Concordia transaction finally works itself out, you know, we really, we want to try and pry that field or use of that field if we can. We don't know if Iona intends to keep it a baseball field or not.
They've clearly let it go. It looks terrible.
I know, I know. We would maintain it. So, if anybody has contacts with Iona who can put us in touch with a good word, we'd appreciate it. We, let's see, we're also closing out a building project over the next month or two, and there's no facilities action items.
Great, thank you, Dan. Onto agenda, item 10, I believe all the board committees that met have already talked about, so we're good to go there. So, our next meeting... Oh, sorry.
Committee.
Good. Oh, strategy and curriculum. I apologize. Thank you.
We have a quick meeting. We also had a number of guests. We went over three different units, a follow-up on the child soldiers unit, which is in the eighth grade, a civil rights unit in the fifth grade, and a week of service at the high school.
And your next meeting is, has it been scheduled yet?
No.
No, okay.
We, the three of us will be going to the April 5th, I think that's the right date.
Correct.
Meeting.
Correct. Good, thank you.
Not as a committee, but the three of us will be going.
Great, thank you. Our next meeting is on April 19th. It is our regular meeting, just so you know. And so now, we turn to the point of public discussion. As I mentioned at the beginning, it's unusual for us to have such a large crowd, so once again, thank you very, very much. This is an opportunity for us to hear from you on your views. We really do welcome these this time because it is our chance to not only learn from you but to look at issues from almost a degree or 60 degrees, so thank you for your participation. Because we do have so many people tonight, I would invite that we invite you to keep your information for us very concise so that we have opportunity for everybody to speak. If you find that the speaker before you has expressed your point of view, that's good. We're listening to each one of us. I'm going to hope that we can limit this to an hour. We'll see how we do, though. Tom says it'd be better. So, actually, I was going to share with you that Tom sent out an email today about a Michigan school board...
Michigan, yeah, no, the board president choked another board member, and it was awesome. I had a video of him.
I just keep imagining who's choking who.
Chip sent it to me! And I shared it with everybody else, so I'm not the bad guy here. I'm certainly not inviting choking.
Okay, good idea. And I also say, if you have comments or questions about particular individuals, please address me with word privately on those issues, just out of curiosity, respect the others. And we're always available to answer any questions if you have them online as well. So, with that, open it up. Please ask if you'd tell us your name, of course, and Don Bringle, a dear friend.
Thank you, Arlene. My name is Don Bringle. I have two seventh graders in the school, and a boy and girl. Thank you for allowing me just to address the board. I appreciate it very much. I think a couple of comments, I think, from both Toms regarding the presentation from the search firm. And I think the thing that interests me is... And I think the thing that interests me is that I feel the same way about what was presented. Those could apply to any school in Westchester County, they could apply to any school probably anywhere. They're all very good comments, but I think any superintendent would want to live up to all five of those. So, my question is, and Arlene, you asked me not to put anybody on the spot, but I'm going to try. I don't know if Roy or Jack have been questioned by the search firm in particular, but I think for all of us, we would like to know, apart from those five...
Criteria?
Criteria. You know, some of the things that I just thought about here, I'd like to know, Roy, why you chose Bronxville? And Jack, I'm not sure how many times you were a superintendent, I think it was more than once.
Thirty-five years.
Absolutely. So, you know, the things that come to my mind, local area, commute, pay, student body, parental involvement, climate, expectations, curriculum standards, those are sort of the meat of why I would think a superintendent comes to this school or any other school. Could you tell all of us, why, maybe starting with Jack, why you chose one or two of your school, if there was a consistent theme? And then, I don't know if anybody's asked Roy from the search firm why he chose Bronxville, and I think that's important for the search firm to know, what were the criteria that Roy used, even though he was part of that same search firm's search? Why did Roy come to Bronxville?
Jack, want to go first?
We're only trying to find one person. It'd be nice if we have several really good people to choose from, but we're not really interested in 100 candidates, we're interested in finding the right person. And I'm going to pick up on the sort of opposite side of Tom's question. Highly involved community, high expectations, the idea of moving to the next level. There are communities that talk about that, but they're perfectly happy to be where they are on the list of nationally ranked school districts. There's a level of complacency. They don't say they're complacent, but they are. To me, what's exciting about Bronxville is that there has been a tremendous amount of change. We are a substantially better school district today than when our children went to this district, substantially better. And if you are somebody who is really interested in pushing out the envelope, that makes this exciting. That's where those words have a different meaning. To me, the words don't mean that much, and I appreciate the words meant that went on, there's nothing wrong with that. But I think what we hired, why we hired this firm is for their connections, on one hand, and their understanding of Bronxville, the school district, the community, on the other. My guess is that we will find, the person we find will be somebody who is not out seeking a job. They are not going to be looking at Education Week, they're not going to be looking at other places. They're going to be somebody that this group of people finds. Somebody you may know, my wife is a head under. She goes out looking for candidates. She seeks out people. I want them to seek out people. The conversation passed me, but I wanted to ask them that question. And the people that they find, who are excited about Bronxville and the opportunity it offers somebody professionally, are not about commuting, not about those other things. They're really about pushing out the envelope. And if something's not, I hope they don't apply. I mean, really, this should be exciting for somebody. Somebody should hear Marty, or Susan, or Chuck talk and say, wow, that is a great opportunity. I'm having a terrific time where I am, but this is a great opportunity. So, I hope that answers your question. I went to different places for different reasons, but I was always driven to be pushing the envelope out.
So, that was your consistent theme?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so, I did have a chance to speak at the search section.
And I have too.
And it's, you know, it's interesting, because you really want to say about Bronxville, it's hard to say than that. You know, and to Jack's point, the words for somebody as a superintendent, you're going to find similar things in other districts. But Bronxville does carry a reputation. And for me, it was the reputation of Bronxville, the community, the uniqueness of the K-12 building, which was said, it was about the work, it was about the promise, it was about for me, the fit that I felt, where I wanted to do the kind of work that I wanted to be engaged in, fitting well with what I was learning about Bronxville and Bronxville Promise. So, it was that, and I felt I could come in and have a very similar philosophical makeup about education, and it seemed right in the right place. But the other thing I want to add is, you know, when superintendents go out with the partner of the job, they're going to pick up the phone and call me, because I'm retiring. If I was being fired, they may not call me. But, or they might. But they'll pick up the phone and talk about it, and when you go in for an interview, it's almost, you know, I was interviewing Bronxville as much as I hoped they weren't doing it, because you wanted to make sure it was going to work. You know, as an experienced superintendent, you're not going to leave a place to leave it. You want to make sure it's going to, you know, be a good opportunity. So, those kind of things combined, and reputation, and speaking with colleagues, that's what attracted me.
And the tennis outfit, right?
And Tom's tennis outfit. It's a visual I'll never get out.
And you actually came over from Jersey, right?
I did. Well, I was working in New York at the time.
You were in A.C., right?
But prior to that, I, there were two years in Jersey.
Jersey.
Yeah. Roy was the first one we interviewed.
He was.
Super Bowl Sunday?
Yeah, he never forgets that either.
Yeah, Super Bowl Sunday.
Others? What school or district did you come from? I'm sorry.
Well, I was in Hastings. I was in Jersey. I was in Ramsey. And my own, I was 2012 Superintendent of the Year.
Yay! Congratulations. I was in Ramsey.
And you immediately left.
Before you could catch up, Jack.
The Ashley Bourdain.
Correct.
Can someone say something?
Hi, Michael Chermonti. I have a child in school. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I personally participated in the process. I was in one of the focus groups, in-person focus group, and I think the consulting group did a very good job. Out of those, my question though is, out of those five paragraphs of criteria specs, and they're all, you know, important, I just want to make sure that we're, that the board isn't losing sight of something very simple but critical, and, and that is academic excellence. Because let's face it, somebody can be a great communicator, but if the school's academics fall off a cliff and academic ratings plummet, that's not really that important at the end of the day. So, I know there was some reshuffling, I'm not quite sure how you guys all worked that out, but I hope that, number one, at the top of that list of shuffling, is going to be a superintendent who's absolutely committed to academic excellence of this institution, and will not only keep it here and maintain it, but will try to improve it.
That was number one, and it'll stay number one.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
You know, I mentioned something. When I was in Portland, city of 56,000 students in the school district, a group of us were sitting around talking about the mission for the school, and the fact that almost no one pays any attention to it after it's written. And we started boiling it down, and we boiled it down as far as we could, and it was, all students achieve, no excuses, no exceptions. I think that that is non-negotiable. Excellence in the sense of every single kid achieving, not 20%, 30% getting APs and the rest of the kids falling off. It is every kid achieving at a high level, at a competitive level, where they can go out into the world, not only college, but beyond, ready to contribute, as a person, as a citizen.
And so that's where their track record becomes really important, right? So, we will make sure, we'll go back and look at all of the districts that they've been to, and look at their rankings, and their AP ranks, and all that stuff, and make sure that they are of equal or maybe better. And that would be positive.
Arlene, didn't we recently, in the last year or two, attain our highest rating in New York State ever, under Dr. Montesano? I mean, and that, we...
No, that's nationwide, I'm sorry.
Nationwide, we reached 99, actually.
So, we break the top 100 for the first time, and I'm going to take a lot of credit for that, of course, because I'm out of here in three months and six days. But, you know, I have been on here for a little while, and it's, you know, all getting aside, you know, that is never, academic excellence has never been out of anybody that I've dealt with at this school, not once ever, out of their sight. Not, it's just, it just hasn't. And I think when, you know, Dr. Montesano's reading the rather impressive, frankly annoyingly impressive credentials of some of our young people and their accomplishments, making me feel bad and inadequate, but fine. I, you know, I really, I really stress that, because there have been some disagreements lately, okay? And there have been some different perspectives lately, you know? That's well and good, and we haven't had YouTube moments, which is all the better. But let's not lose sight of the fact that this school is really an excellent school, and if anybody says otherwise, they're bullshit.
Hi, members of the board. My name's Liam Parry. I graduated last year. I'm currently a student at Yale University. I wanted to thank you for letting me speak, and for two quick things, I wanted to highlight, first of all, how grateful I am for Dr. Montesano, and how great a job he did as superintendent, and how excited I am to see that Isabella is also saying the same, as being able to, you know, voice student opinion in the school. I wanted to mention two things about Bronxville that I really admired, and something that really, you know, helped me, and the fact that leads to this next superintendent search. One, I believe, really is the fact that Bronxville does, to all of your, echo your points, really focus on academic excellence. And while I credit everyone in the school for that, I think there's a primary, an outstanding effort to our faculty, to our teachers, who develop such invested interest in their students, both academically and on a personal level, which I think is very rare, and I think it's worth highlighting, both helping the members of the administration and other faculty work together to create the bonds for students. Secondly, I watched these board meetings since my junior year of high school, long before anyone showed up to these meetings. I can have many of my friends attest to that, including my principal, Ms. Meyer. And I was, and I continue to still watch them, even at Yale. So, as I was watching last month on Thursday, my typical board meeting, I was shocked to see there were so many people here. And I don't want to call anyone out, but there were a lot of, in my opinion, really nasty complaints, and again, it's Dr. Kecky, who has, in my mind, and having worked with her on several occasions, been one of the greatest administrators I think I've seen in the district period. Dr. Kecky during COVID was one of the first people to help try to suggest new policies and new events that our student body could do when it didn't seem like we could do anything. Dr. Kecky was honestly probably one of the leading factors to why our school continues to be, and still is, such a great success. And to the guidelines of curriculum, which are so important in our school, it was disheartening to see, you know, such a flagrant tack on her judgment in instituting new policies for our curriculum. And while I think that's important, I think that underlying everything is the discussion of being a critical thinker, as one of the tenants of the Bronxville Promise, and I've written six essays on the Bronxville Promise, in critical thinking, and I contest now at Yale. One of the primary things is being able to evaluate claims, and gather evidence, and make arguments. And in the discussion last month about whether or not topics of race, and identity, and diversity, equity, inclusion ought to be included in our curriculum, it almost felt in some way of some limitation on the things we could discuss in class. In fact, as a student at least, I know that being able to discuss these things broadly and openly in a community with my peers, and with my family so close by, is an experience that isn't modeled at a college or university when you leave. And to be quite frank, these conversations happen everywhere. I think we'd be blind to say that they don't. So, if we ought to, you know, consider our children, if we want to remain a school of excellence in sending our students to prestigious universities and, you know, colleges across the country, education of this will be, education of race, of sexual orientation, of white variety, of equity and inclusion will be incredibly important. So, I ask you all to, especially those who might have echoed the ideas of some parents from last month, to really consider having and trusting a really professional and really, really, really talented administrators, and being able to adapt curriculum in a way that's conducive to all of our students, so that they can grow and really be at the best of their potential. Thank you.
So, I'd like to respond, of course, because I started a discussion about the FBI, and did you sign the Change.org petition?
I did not, no.
So, when I questioned Mara if critical race theory was going to be introduced into the school, she responded, I was concerned that white children were going to be taught that they were oppressors, and everyone else was going to be taught that they are the victims, and everything else would step from there. So, that was my main concern, because I don't want my son, who might know, get this in his soul, in his mind, that he is, he is a bad person. He did not, you know, murdered George Floyd, sorry. He did not, he was not around four hundred years ago when slavery was prevalent in the world. I do not agree that we should not talk about race. Of course, we should talk about race. In fact, I think Mara Kaki, in one of her emails, said that the school does an amazing job already about incorporating these principles in school. I mean, the people that promulgated the Change.org petition demanding critical race theory in the school, talked to her, they're the Bronxville Civic Reformers, and they were satisfied that the Bronxville School is doing a good job already. Okay? So, that was my main concern. So, when she responded to me, I didn't feel that she answered me 100%. So, I filed the Freedom of Information Law request with Dan Carlin, as I'm allowed to do. And I got some information, and I found out that this HACNA consultant was hired by the school to come in and speak to faculty and staff over many days, along with talking scrubs, and, you know, talk about white supremacy, and talk about how white teachers need to unpack their privilege, as if all white teachers are privileged. You know, are we talking about white people too, or just people that work in this district? I'm not sure. Unpack their privilege, you know, and, and, you know, get off their high horse when they're talking about race. And it all seems so wrong to me to target white people like that, and, I mean... And, I mean, as a person of Italian background, I know Italian descent, Italians were treated like blacks earlier in the century. They were lynched in the South. They were not allowed to get jobs. They had problems. Irish too. I mean, we're lumped together in this white group of people. And it doesn't matter if you're rich or poor white. It's just all set for you. You're just wrong. And I really feel like when you're teaching kids that they're privileged, you know, it's really critical to them. It's abusive. It's immensely, and I don't know how you feel about that. I mean, I know how you might feel about kids of this village because a lot of them had come from money. But I'm not a white kid's home for money. I mean, white people in trailer parks, they're not getting affirmative action because they're white. It's a big session, anyway. It's a huge topic. And for little kids to be taught this, it's damaging. I think there's a lot, I sense fear in a lot of what we had last time and also in some of your comments. I think the key is first to listen and really engage in a dialogue and also to trust that we're all coming from a position of looking at what's best for our community. Nobody's out to sabotage. And we're coming from a place of trust. And I think the work that you're doing with the advisory group, I hope, helps to rebuild the trust. And I hope a central tenet is to listen to each other and understand that listening doesn't mean that you're going to agree with me, but at least I can listen to you and understand you. So thank you. Others?
Oh, in that, thank you. Thank you. My name is Cynthia Mota. I am a resident and a teacher in the school. And we're going to ask you to speak through the aisle. Sorry, or come up closer. Thank you. All right, class. My name is Cynthia Mota. I am a high school math teacher and also a resident. And this is my 19th year at Bronxville and my 42nd year teaching. The first thing I want to say is, when Mara Kepke came, she almost single-handedly straightened out Common Core Math. We all owe her a tremendous debt of gratitude. As a math teacher, I certainly do. So I didn't want to say that. The second thing is, I want to say is, I want to talk a little bit about teachers and professional development. Every administrator here wishes that they could do a professional development day and teachers would immediately go out and change the way they're teaching. That's not reality. So I was at those, they were Zooming for one thing. And what I heard was a pretty standard discussion of language, of microaggression, which I have known about, I've heard about, have had discussed for at least 35 years and years I've been teaching. And like most teachers at that professional day, first of all, we were Zooming. We were all exhausted because we had been, because we were Zooming and we were doing double time on lesson plans. And I can just tell you, it's like any professional development day. You go, oh, that's kind of nice to hear. Okay, now what's due tomorrow? What do I have to do tomorrow? I am so far behind. So I think we all really need some perspective about what happens when Mara or Rachel or Ann invites a consultant to come and talk to us. It's an opinion. We listen to it. Some of us pick it up and use it. Math teachers are like, oh, what does this have to do with the class? So, and also just to point out that the faculty at Bronxville are not stupid. They are not easily swayed. They're not woke. They're not particularly conservative. They're just people who think. They're also people who care a lot about children. And I do not know a single colleague who would teach a class and make children hate themselves. And in fact, one of the professional development consultants we had or one of the meetings we had with high school teachers was how to have discussions in class to give students room to voice their feelings, how to allow children to have discussions without forcing a belief on anybody but making room for diverse opinions. And that's where my colleagues are mostly coming from. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Aaron Schaefer, a parent, have a child in school. Very encouraging. That's great. You know, one thing is simple, like you don't fight racism with more racism. And so like that description that you just provided is great. So that's why it's so bizarre to have someone like Hakma come into the school. Just didn't make sense. When we tried to get information around it, it wasn't transparent because her vision is not that. It's not an open discussion. It's racism. It's bigoted. It's hate. And you don't fight hate racism with more racism. Anyways, I was here for the search. So one of the points in the discussion group I went to was the trade-off between someone who has a long, successful track record, but then they're toward the end of their career. So they might not have a lot of time dedicated to Bronxville, maybe because they're sad you're leaving so soon. So it seems like you just got here, right? And so versus someone, someone who could come and dedicate a long time, right? And be here for 10 or 20 years. But that may be more youthful, more inexperienced, and how to balance those. And are we not looking at someone who's a potential young rock star but could come in and have longevity here versus someone who's at the end of their career, but a very successful career, they could come in but wouldn't be here for a limited time? So that trade-off, is that being looked at?
Yeah, well, it actually came up in the focus group. So I had spent some time in school leadership about that. And actually, the average age of a first year of a superintendent is 56. And that's because it is a job based upon experience, right? Oh, what an overachiever. So you usually start, of course, as a teacher. You started as a teacher, correct? Then you go on to become a principal. And then you go into what they call the central office. And you become like these individuals or professionals or central office employees. You probably spend some time as an assistant superintendent. And then you ultimately make the jump to the superintendent. When we were interviewing Roy, we actually interviewed several assistant superintendents, thinking, okay, you take the bet that they'll make a good superintendent. And we ultimately included that given that this community, its sophistication, its education, you really need somebody who's kind of got some chops and got some backbone and grit. And that comes from experience. And so it is a trade-off that we have to make.
I would just add as well, part of the reasons for the later stage of life that people get to be superintendents, because there's more risk involved, right? Because other central office positions that exist, the superintendents have tenure. Superintendents don't have tenure. They work on three, four, or five-year contracts. They can be renewed or not renewed, you know, depending on how things go. And you're always running the risk of board members changing, your board coming in, wanting to make some change. So that goes into that as well. And certainly, you may hit a point, and it's a tough balance for the board to seek. But just because someone's young also doesn't mean they will be here, you know, 10-plus years either. They could be looking for a larger school district. Who knows, right? Or it just doesn't work out. So I think it's more important to find the right fit, in my opinion, than necessarily age thing.
We met with younger people the last time around. And, you know, one of them was like right around the finalist group, right? And one thing I've learned is that there is a lot of mobility amongst superintendents, for whatever reason. Jack's had like 35 jobs. And, but in all seriousness, there is a lot of mobility. It's also, part of the balance is, this isn't really a community where, you know, an on-the-job kind of thing can happen, right? So yeah, no, we strike a balance. We have an open mind on everybody. And, you know, I think obviously we picked the right one. But, you know, the school leadership brought great candidates. They weren't great at the end of the day compared to Dr. Montesano. I'm going to have to do something awful to you, by the way, because I've been complimenting you way too much.
I know, just waiting for you.
But frankly, they put some people in front of us who sucked. And we moved on from those people. So we had a broad variety of gender, of ages, of where they came from, points in their careers and stuff. They did a good job about putting bodies in front of us. So we had kind of a basis upon which to make a judgment.
Others? Sir?
Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Greeley, 30-year resident. My two kids are currently out of the school. I just want to comment on the superintendent search. There's been so much talk tonight about the Bronxville Promise. I think trustees owe it to the community to take a page from the Bronxville Promise. That is, under Innovate, it says, "Recognizing the opportunity for improvement, taking risks to create solutions that add value or serve a need." That is, I think the school should practice what the promise preaches and expand the superintendent search beyond those in the education sector. Given that countless talented managers/executives in the private sector have successfully made the jump from one industry to another, why not broaden the search to private sector executives? If we were looking, of course, for a physics teacher, we wouldn't be contacting English teachers because their roles are so specialized. What we're looking for is a top-notch administrator. And so I don't think it's necessarily someone who has to have a background in the education sector. And in a word, I like to go fishing. When I fish in a pond, I don't catch many keepers. When I fish in the ocean, I catch bigger and much better fish. Thanks very much.
If I could address that, because it came up in the focus groups as well. So I did reach out to the school's attorney to understand really what were the constraints that we're dealing with. So generally, we do have to hire an educator because the New York State law requires superintendents to hold proper certifications. And that's called a school district leader certification. And that comes from usually a master's degree in education, three years of teaching experience, and then passing these examinations. A school district can petition the commissioner of education for an exemption. I remembered Kathy Black, I believe was her name, was an individual in the New York City system that they petitioned and were granted an exception for her. And that was because of the size of the area within the city that she was dealing with and the fact that there would be such a solid group below her that would have the Masters of Education, et cetera. Our attorney was very clear with me that she thought a school our size would not be able to receive such an exemption.
Thanks so much.
No, I appreciated the question originally and we did listen.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is it, sorry? I know, I just wanted to quickly touch back briefly to something Miss Moppen said. First of all, I really appreciate everything. Miss Moppen is one of my teachers and I loved her. But that's what you said about training teachers about how to speak to students. I've been at Bronxville since the first grade and obviously, much more sensitive, heavier topics come up a lot more towards high school. But throughout my entire time here, I think I've participated in every class in very open and inviting discussions. And I think teachers are very, very encouraging of that kind of thing. I remember even like walking out of assemblies or specific conversations in classes and being really impressed with the kinds of conversations that me and other students were able to uphold and keep going. And like, teachers had to stop us at the end of class because the classroom is, we have so much momentum and just want to keep discussing things. But it's also like a learning opportunity to learn from other people's opinions and what they have to say. You learn a lot about a person and about whatever you're discussing. And I just think that's a big part of the academic excellence, the kind of open discussions that we're like so eager to have and so encouraged to have. And that's something I really appreciate from my role in education.
Other comments?
Yes, I can't say it better than Liam did.
Can you just say your name first?
Oh, hi. I'm Jen Redman. My family's been in this school district for 11 years. And I have logged more hours in this school than I care to tell you all about. And so when I watched last week, the previous Board of Ed meeting, and knowing that we're hiring a superintendent, I became a little worried that somebody watching it might think that that characterized the parents of our school. And that just doesn't square with the experience that I've had or the experience that my children had. It doesn't square with Liam's experience. It doesn't square with Isabelle's experience. It doesn't square with Miss Moppen's experience. I mean, I have pictures of Tom Wilson playing dodgeball with the kids that I'm holding for another day. I, you know, seen Miss Meyer go through, challenge success. And like, if somebody told you that you worked in a really successful high school and then they told you that they were going to challenge the notions by which you were successful and you said, yeah, I'm up for that work? That's Miss Meyer. Talk about how to raise an adult and, you know, working with Mara to try to bring empathy and understanding through discussions over a book topic. She was a master of just, you know, coming together with parents and then presenting and encouraging discussion. It's just not what my experience has been. And I just wanted the teachers and our administrators to know that the parents, you have our respect, that you have our gratitude. And that apparently, from the data collected, you have everybody else's. So that's the spirit of our community. And it's important to say that out loud, in public. And it's also important to say that we respect your expertise. We respect your professionalism. We respect your humanity and your dignity. You've earned it. And you have the right to do your job without fear and intimidation. And that those are not acceptable qualities in our community. Open communication, collaboration, calm, community building, common ground. That is what we stand for. It's what happens in the playground. It's what happens on the park place. It's what happens in our churches. It's what happens at our ES, MS, high school, PTA meetings. That's what happens. And that's what we're about. And we should continue that tradition. Thanks.
I'm Ted Parry. I graduated junior in high school. And I served on the DI committee for the high school. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate a lot of these sentiments against my brother, by Isabella, by Miss Moppen. There's never been a time, especially in these committee meetings, where there's teachers, students, and faculty, where I've ever felt any sense of white guilt, where I've ever felt like the word privilege was a word that came to attack who I am as a person. And I just, I can't see how, sorry, I can't see how, I can't see how Dr. Kepke is getting so scrutinized for this. And I just, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Can I respond to that? Look, I don't want this to have a debate. Can I ask for a moment? Do we have any in the queue? Any questions in the queue? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the reason why...
I agree. The community should be nice and everyone should get along, right? But the consultant that was brought in, that was recommended to the school and who was hired by Dr. Kaki, was promoting, appealing that whiteness needs to be eliminated, that the words associated with whiteness, and it's all in the documents. the words associated with whiteness, and it's all in the, it's all in the document, words associated with whiteness need to be eliminated, and excellence, which we've been talking about all night, is one of those words in her presentation. So she had been giving, she had been giving these workshops over a period of time. So that was the issue. We were worried as parents that teachers were taking this and putting it into the curriculum. Now, I'm so glad that teacher spoke and said, you know, we analyze this information critically and we look at it and we make our own decisions. You know, someone brought that consultant here and they're in the room and I'm not going to point that person out, but, you know, that's why we had that issue last month. That's the reason. I mean... Just for everybody's benefit, the consultant was here, as I understand it, for a total of three hours. I just want us to keep that in context. She was here for three hours.
So all in a row or different days?
And I don't think it matters, but...
It was a while ago, wasn't it, Arlene?
It was a year.
Dr. Montesano, you formed this committee for the purpose of an ongoing discussion with anybody who wants to have that discussion, right? I mean, and I think we're all for open and getting, you know, having frank discussion on an important topic, right?
Correct. And I do believe it's important that we, everybody is given the space to be critical thinkers. I think Mrs. Moppen made a great point of that. I've attended those DEI sessions for other boards I served on, and I looked at what she did, and to be honest, it's exactly what I heard down in North Carolina. And it wasn't that it was bundled into me, I took what I needed from it and moved on, and I, just as Mrs. Moppen said. So I think for us to move on, we need to like all the, it's time to let the...
My name is Elizabeth Rangwell, I have two children in the school. And I just actually wanted to reiterate what you're saying, Arlene, which is that I think we're all coming to this room, we care so much about our kids, about the future of our school. They think something that's so important for us to keep in mind is our futures, the superintendent is watching this. Our children will watch this, we will watch this in history, and we, something happened last year, some of us agree with that choice, some of us don't, that's great in a community that we can talk about that, but I am so worried about what happens in the future. I think maybe that's something that can unify all of us. We don't know what's to come in the 21st century. Challenges will come our way, our children's way, and I think it's vital that we learn to accept the things that have happened and to move on. We may agree with them, we may not, but I'm so concerned that the superintendent may be watching this and wondering what to do in a community that can't move beyond a choice that some of us agree to and some of us didn't, if we can't show that as a community, we can accept each other's differences and move on.
Elizabeth, and I think we can also agree it's time to close this meeting. So do I have a motion?
Move.
Thank you. And once again, thank you, everybody. Oh, so much, everybody votes yes.
Yeah, everybody voting yes.